I gotta press again. So. See, I'm first going to record. So if I should save to the cloud or save to the computer, I don't even know how to access the cloud. Now I feel really old. Save to my computer.
Yep, I was gonna say probably save.
Same way, right?
I would be suggesting that.
Cloud, definitely.
I will save. And most recently, I want to add that. I'm always, uh, now we're supposed to announce that the meeting is being recorded. Uh, this one will also be available later for anyone else to view. It'll be on our website and available upon request. We're always supposed to say that after being the report button. So that's reported, that you know that you're being recorded. So there's my. There's my legal, uh. Advice for the day. So this meeting is being recorded. It will be available after the meeting. Um, typically for in-person, I'd really like to just bring out where the exits are in the room, but I'm not there. So, um, I just think maybe everyone should take a minute and figure out where the exits went. Uh, figure out where the exits are in case there is an emergency. You can do a package jet, um, or if any time during the meeting. And, um, you can feel safe to sit up and move about the room as well. So I'm just gonna, um, share it in and go through a little, a few introductions. Yes, again. See, I am sharing my screen. So, um, I'll just go through a couple of introductions of, uh, that I may say staff were here today. Uh, my name is Stephanie Myers and I drafted and rolled the permit, um, the draft permit for the Grand Marine Wastewater Treatment Facility. Um, I did work in the Northeast Northwest Regional Unit as a permit writer for the last 12 years. And fun fact, today is my 12th year anniversary of my starting date. So Paul Schreier there in that face, guys. Paul Schreier hired me or he got me started at least at MPCA 12 years ago on this thing. So thanks, Paul. Give me a round of applause for my earnings. I'm so thankful for my work. They're very good at this for that. Um, so Paul, if you look, you can say I attribute it to everybody. Paul is a regional supervisor for the Northeast and Northwest Regional Unit. Um, also in the room with me, there is Wes Lexel and he is our review engineer. And so he's gonna be able to answer any questions you have about any typical, uh, questions. Um, any components, um, of the plants for the facility. Uh, next to him is, um, Mackenzie Wilkinson. She is a compliance enforcement officer, um, for the Northeast Region as well. Um, at least you said is on screen here. Um, she is the environmental analysis and outcomes water assessment supervisor. Um, so she works directly with Megan Hampton. Uh, and Megan Hampton is our environmental analysis and outcomes research scientist. And she is the person who is coordinating these variants reissues. Uh, Megan couldn't be with us today. Uh, so she did provide us with a presentation uh, about the variants and, uh, the specifics with it. Uh, it's pre-recorded and so we're gonna play that for you today so that you can get all the specifics. Um, after we, the presentation runs for about 22 minutes. And after the presentation, there'll be plenty of time for questions and hopefully all the answers. But if we don't have the answers, we can definitely follow up afterwards. But, um, there'll be quite a, quite a bit of time for that as well. And then after that, we'll adjourn and we'll talk a little bit about the timeline of the events too. So. Um, uh, does anyone have any questions on the agenda or what we're gonna go through today or any of our roles so far?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna skip over here to the presentation. We're gonna hit mic. Hopefully it's gonna be loud enough for you. One of the things I do wanna say is because the video is recorded, there are a couple slides where like, um, just like the first word of the sentence is cut off. I've listened to it all the way through, but I also read Megan's, um, transcript. And I promise you, even though one of the slides it sounds like you might have missed something, there's nothing missed, I promise. Um, so it is the full presentation. So I will go ahead and start with that. Can't work with everyone?
Thank you, everyone. My name is Spade. I work with Water Quality Control. I can see a lot of the same. Today, I'm gonna be sharing some information regarding the variants within the Grand Marine Post. Please feel free to drop questions in the chat as they arise. I know that we'll get to them in the comments at the end of the session. Also, please be aware that when we need to be recorded, the public will text you the fact will be stated. So you may be asking, why requesting this? Those that are now in the system, you should resist. However, because Grand Marine has requested a variance from Minnesota's water quality standard of carefree, there are some additional requirements for review through the Public Notice Period of the Civil Act that will review through today's presentation. For today's presentation, I'll go over a few important topics. First, the Clean Water Act and some of the common services within the water quality standards and rules for wastewater facilities. I'll touch on the basis of perjury. My Grand Marine has tested the variants. What is a variance? Under the eligibility and requirement for covariants. Uh, we'll touch on next steps, uh, for the Public Notice Period. And lastly, we'll have a number of basic staff bills to respond to any questions or comments you can have. So the Clean Water Act was passed 50 years ago with the global movement toward the water to the present. And one critical program is the Water Quality Standard. So water quality standards are based, that is, in use. So how the water will be used will determine the type of protection. So examples is here, wildlife, industry, agriculture. So the way this goes out is that the necessary protections based on the specific area. So the way they do protect a water body for aquatic lakes may be different depending on the temperature, so that water can be used for very good. So we have each of these uses as a fine power. So based on the purposes of uses, first water standards developed, and then fourth, certain changes. Always see their number here, which is a naturally occurring element in this class. The reason we're considering here is that once it's in the water hall, it can accumulate in fish chambers. As you look up the group of, and so higher trouble global predators of fish can be exposed to much higher pressure. And since our protein is known for our toxin, it's elevated for a great presentation, but thankfully for others. Predators, humans, all people, so they're well, like, better. So to protect wild animals, we have access to the nation. Minnesota has a water quality standard, 1.38 grams per liter, total of 3,000 units. Because this is the most stringent for clear water quality standard, if they're saving water by the Grand Marine's facility. After, they even have a set of goals. This illustrates the difference between the water quality standards we've discussed thus far and the alcohol of itself. So the water quality standard is the goal for the alcohol. So based on my use, what like states, uh, we have those set water quality standards that are then used to have the ethyl limits. The upstream dischargeers. And those ethical limits are applicable to that facility and enforced within. So the standard of that water body, alcohol limit must be met. And PCA, it processes these ethical limits for perfectly. So to meet the regulations of the Clean Water Act, all points that is in the discharge of ocean level must have. And these permits tell these facilities based on capital and state water quality standards, the receiving and the dashboarders. What they need to do would compare alcohol to maintain a necessary water quality. So Grand Marine has the national district management system, or ETS, state disposal system, SBS permit. Uh, with regulations, they're discharged. But this includes all technology-based alcohol limits and in water quality based alcohol limits. These WPB's are necessary to give a facility potential to cause exceedance of water quality standard. And in this case, we have a WPB for. So that is the only interest in the permit here. How each of these pieces kind of come together for a period. So there's even water body, Grand Marine's discharge, it's like. Just doesn't need to take class two A. This doesn't need to project from aquatic life, even how. Each of these three endpoints, athletic health, follow it, uh, has its own water quality standard of the basic constitution of the water. But the most stringent of those criteria is at one point. Perjury, that is a place to protect. So that is the ultimate standard to be met in the seeking water body. And it's a water quality standard that is described with the alcohol limit. So, um, the third bubble here, that's. Uh, actually 1.88 grams per liter is complete effort, the 3.48 grams per liter is the deal. Let's touch on Grand Marine's wastewater trips. So they treat lakes around 700 households, once again, a contaminated industrial user, several local businesses abuse buildings with some downstream water and filtration. A quick overview of the main functions to treat the trash. Well, there's a manual bar screen that looks larger and remaining objects in the wastewater. Wastewater then moves into the oxidation ditch where bacteria and, uh, are in the wastewater. After this process, the wastewater moves to someone takes, and here's some of the bacteria that was out of the wastewater. And are sent on to be processed as part of the waste. Hopefully, they're sent back as good. The water is then disinfected, looking at how to stretch the waste. Those documents are the transfer. Our solid introduction of the facility processing and landing. Perjury is quite ubiquitous in the area. It can be released through natural vents, disruptions and forest fires, where it can also be coming from a number of antimicrobial exorcists. The wastewater discharge for industry infiltration and filtration system, source water for new waste users, central offices, better than the alchemic, from the patients, or regular household. And because each community is separate, so also that vacation is really a bright step in any average producer. Here shows the audit results of perjury concentrations for Grand Marine's. Two horizontal lines, both of them have components derived from the water quality standard. We can see here pretty clearly that Grand Marine consistently needs their annual. 1.88 degrees by 2.8. So when the facility gets there. Um, if they realize that they can't beat those, I think there's only a few bars to them. One of those is fair. But it's fair. But by the way, through the tool, it's allowed under the Clean Water Act. And then there's a time limit on the pollution of the waterfalls. As far as specifically. It's from a specific discharge. Um, and the goal of the variants is to give the committee additional time to figure out what solutions, you know, can give them in the class. So during the term of. Committee has to meet a number of requirements. First, they'll have an interim that will, that is set to their currently achievable concentration. Um, and furthermore, committee will have a special set plan of activities. Out of the name, their current, um, reductions of perjury and how it needs to be changed for reductions to eventually. Eligible for a variance. First, the committee must demonstrate that they are unable to provide. And as we saw with their form data, it's true for Grand Marine. They are not able to sustain the span of. Secondly, the committee must demonstrate one of several eligibility requirements for what's in federal and state legal. Uh, and very basically, Minnesota almost exclusively uses the financial sector. Uh, which means that their eligibility for it is based on a showing of substantial wide spread of. There is a couple of change, uh, the committee builds out, which aligns the cost of installation and operation of treatment options. And how that will potentially impact their cost. And if the estimated costs are calculated to be below the 2%, they could be owed a personal income. And then it is deemed to be infeasible for that community and it is considered a reach, which means that they are, um, effectively eligible for a variance. To determine the appropriateness of a perjury variance and to demonstrate that they're not a hardship, Grand Marine contracted the P2T, Larry, and then. We're gonna evaluate the seating feasibility several trip objects to get them into compliance to final. This analysis can become an attachment to the variance application, which is all the public knowledge. Uh, the elements are just. So this report summarizes the use of restorative technologies. Um, and results in the recognition of a helpful situation. The simple tertiary filtration will sound to be most effective of the options that have been presented to compliance. However, it still has to be into result. Do you see it's that 2% of the media will become a threshold that need cases? So installing and operating. The teams, uh, was considered to be the best of all the best. This concept simply does include installation of a ship of that tribute filtration. But in addition to. My own acknowledgement of the ability to. At the facility and some infiltration. But are necessary at first, the team, the group, the actions, the secret, the achieving, and also to allow her effective. Committee is able to demonstrate that they're eligible for a variance. And PCA wants the committee to be able to determine the appropriate perjury habits. It's a lot of the variance to specify. This requires us to establish the basis of conditions where the AJC is. Which is a concept that is defined by the perjury. The AJC here is defined in two places. First, the transcript, which is defined by the greatest production achieved. So simply put, what is the level currently to. The rare and high risks. And the type of experience they currently run, given the current challenges out there. So what is the most stringent perjury concentration they currently successfully. Further, I'll write that. For Grand Marine, this results in a neutral one. As the daily. Secondly, the committee must develop an, including minimization plan, which is based on the specific. So the action tree is part of the optimization process for all variances. So, uh, again, this is out specific activities for me to be moving into the name and which year of the variance. And this action tree has been used by the facility to, to develop other plans, completely minimization. Which starts a bit deeper, talks a bit more about the business of their facility and how. Beyond just, these are the actions. Um, so this P and P spans the, you're careful of the variance. Uh, once P and P is set. Submitted to MPCA. They don't have a guideline of what they need to be recording on when they're in the process. So as part of the variance of graphics, they just. Local harvest, the document, the accomplishments, the concentration trends, influence, and their excellence. And activities for the next year. It's really easy as a whole. Thanks for the committee to take some each year. And iteratively, iteratively evaluating what they've achieved. True. So yes, I will note first off that the action tree is available on the public. So if you'd like to review it, I'm willing to. Um, so first action included in. Is do 100% of the coverage that's the variance. So that's the first thing. Um, some other required actions that may be physically, the committee must keep working on monitoring their influence. Nobody to determine the reductions necessary to be the balance. To determine what other goals need to be. Action trees usually also include for professional purpose. Um, for Grand Marine, this includes identity, the sources of perjury in their system. Uh, and working with those, uh, those countries to decrease any. Actually included in Grand Marine's history. Uh, as discussed, um, in Cooper's economic just actual. Part of that cost total of the swine, the need to. Current concentration and problem problems. So I'm assuming that I should, we shared this several minutes ago. Um, is included in action. Necessary actions. Um, further, looking to continue. Which we include options like. Uncensing, help of the disenters, that will recommend the. Um, analysis or looking at other types of technologies there. Lastly, the committee will need to also work on the bridge to learn education and outreach within. Being of resources, um, and a lot of locations, like remaining with academies, just. So that folks can bring in a possible products at perjury instead of seeing those. Inappropriately, they're. As I said before, additional details. I'll walk through with the committee, uh, maybe cultural for variants, how they demonstrate that eligibility. What are the requirements that need to be covered specifically in the variants? That's kind of a lot of review processes. Uh, where we're at. So at the very beginning, let me take notice of those. At this point, committee, CA wants that they're gonna keep, if we're gonna be able to do those tests. In some cases, like your Grand Marine, a variance may be requested by. Since that's the third, the. And he said, and PCA, that comes eligibility. Um, that draft the global dairy documentation, which is basically all of our. Um, and this included in the public notice. Next, there's an action tree that's drafted, as we talked about. This is usually the collaboration between the committee. Uh, we then provide a group of. For the permit and the variance, how the existing do need to be approved by any PA before they can. Basically, there is no red flags. We want to. Public notice and this public meeting right here have. Public notice will be. And if necessary, we go up here. At the program and then submit to ECA. ECA has succeeded to approve for many days to disagree with the variants. Um, and so once we receive an approval of that variance, we then. For those variants, uh, requirements would be. Hi, I'm Alice. We're, you know, obviously here within the, uh, the commentary area. Our public meeting here. Uh, if you're interested, please provide comments. Permit, the patchings, other variants, documents as well as the right comments. So we can share the first thing. Um, those are the Dr. Ben toes, the symptoms throughout the consultation. Action three, the, uh, food and rage termination, uh, strike. Uh, and also the variance application included that, um, analysis. Um, all that is on the public notice. Oh, I'm curious, and it's quite soon, on May 21st, we're. So if you're interested, um, and the recording of this presentation will be made available. This year, uh, our water quality standard variance page, we should have a list of. Different cases that are for public notice. Approved, you know, or. One more, um, sign here on. As I said, as I said before, this is. Of where to go on the webpage to find, uh, our public notice. As if you go to the public notice section. The comment online and then. List of public notice. Notifications that you'll see, there's usually a, a number, uh, that they are surveyed by. Final day of the comment. So you can control the Grand Marine. Um, and as I said, MPCA will respond to all comments in the secret. And we will update the ranks of the public page as necessary. As a period. That is the end of that presentation. Um, I will open it up to questions now. We have other MPCA staff, both in the room, um, and those online that are available. Are available to be taken. Uh, or to simply. For whoever's interested and would like to share. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna stop sharing. Well, maybe I'll just need the. Um, logs of the MPCA staff up so you can see what. Who knows a little bit about what? So. All right, so, um, that was a good presentation by Megan of just the overview of the variants, the variants process, reason for the variants. And then some of the specifics related to, um, grand marines. Uh, for the Grand Marine's wastewater treatment facility, um, variance campaign. So, um, are there any questions about any of the information that was presented during Megan's presentation? Or are there any comments that you'd like us to either report or respond to at this time?
Yeah, uh, Stephanie, that was 100% unintelligible. I could not understand hardly any of that presentation. Audibly.
Really?
Yes.
Completely could not understand.
Like, if that's a public meeting, we're not there.
So, yeah, that wasn't the plan. It was, uh. The move assets.
Sure, yeah, no, I understand.
I mean, someone should have been able to watch. Pretty basic PowerPoint. Someone here in this room should be able to watch this there because you can't.
It's, it's a good presentation. It's just not, it didn't come through very well here, but no, I agree. Uh, but we certainly could provide that presentation and the transcript.
I'm sorry to hear that. If the audio was bad, I wish I could have known earlier. I might have been able to try to change. Um, what was presented. I can make the PDF of the presentation. I'd like to share it if anyone thinks that would be an option. Um, that'll.
Or from the presentation of the person you saw visually, were there any questions that?
Shrek Ryan wants to see specifically. Also, will be. Are there specific parts about the variants that you'd like us to answer questions about now? I mean, we're, we've all done it this one variants prior to, and so maybe it's an opportunity for us to be able to talk about some of the words you might have seen on the screen that you might, they might have questions about.
Probably not in relation to as much for you, but I guess I'll go over with Mike on this. How much of this? How much of this relates to our already planned changes and upgrades that we would like to implement? Or is this additions to that?
A little of both. You saw that we're required to have a, an analysis of the most cost effective way to meet the requirement and our analysis concluded the most cost effective way was to add another treatment system, but also to do all of the improvements that we've planned to do. So what she said in her presentation was that part of the work, the rehabilitation work is something that's necessary to maintain the existing level of treatment that we're capable of providing.
I got start tracking. I did see the one PowerPoint that, that listed one specific action that we need to do with a filter.
Yeah.
Is that already in?
That's not what we need to do. That is the, if we were to do that, we think we could meet their proposed permit limit. However, the total cost of doing that would greatly exceed the limit of 2% of our, and so we're not proposing to do that. Instead, we're proposing to
Okay, so that, that's why not getting the full audio on this just totally makes it not, like, I hate to even ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's good, it's good to ask questions because the, the, like I said, then the cost was prohibited so that it meant a level of economic hardship. And so that's why the variance was able to be approved for the time, for the biased time for to finish the treatment necessary to
Well, and you know, I can make a lot of assumptions because it wouldn't take much to make things unaffordable in this one. So I still can't relate that to real dollars. And we already have an expensive plan, hopefully implementing. And I just want to know how much of what we already need to do is part of this or not any of this is at a high level? Is this just totally something additional? But maybe this is the time and place for that.
So it should be noted too, that filters, if you were to construct filters for mercury treatment, there's grant money available for that up to, currently it's up to 8 million in a couple of years when they would be implemented, it's up to $10 million to construct those filters. So that does take away a lot of the cost burden, not all of it, obviously, but $10 million for the filters.
So the chart showing that our current output in affluent water was, was giantly fluctuating. What's the reason for that?
Number of different reasons. Some of it's atmospheric, some of it's some historic mercury that is within the collection system that, you know, lost loose or whatever you want to call it. And I don't know.
We know that mercury in municipal treatment like this is really closely tied to solids in wastewater system. So if you're seeing higher mercury loads, that's basically like an indication of less solids control. And that can be a big thing that causes that is large storm events, weather events that kind of push everything through the plant quicker. So that's part of what filters essentially, you know, reduce those solids down to close to zero. So that's where you get the consistent mercury treatment. Also, the, you know, the near future construction plans we have to work on the preliminary treatment, upgrade the oxidation dish, those will also help control solids. So that's, to our best knowledge and, you know, for municipal treatment, best way to reduce mercury is to control those solids. To treat the dissolved mercury that's in the water is very hard to get to. You essentially need something like reverse osmosis that is even more complex. So that's, that's our best understanding of what causes those.
Do we know like how much mercury you're pulling out of a lake, right? Versus putting back in, right? I mean, are we, we actually cleaning up the waters or is it a commitment back? Is it higher concentration of mercury in Lake Superior?
It varies time to time, but at times, yes, we are. Or atmospherically even, yes.
It's important also to put the INI work too, which can help reduce those scouring events that run through the collection system, which shake loose historical solids. That's also pretty important.
Historical, my first image is something that's sitting there lodged, so to speak. And all of a sudden.
Yeah, basically a scouring that comes in, just like
Yeah, that's been like accumulating for a while and all of a sudden boom.
And then so then by replacing some of the infrastructure, you're leveling out those storm events and getting all that info. More to the wastewater.
You saw we were required to put a draft plan together as well for what we're going to be doing during the five years of this variance. And I think some of those activities actually directly tried to get answers for the questions we might have to do some investigation about where we think the sources are.
Maybe two S S done plans like that similarly, most recently with Eerie, with those clock disc filters that they mentioned. They just installed those in the Eerie last year to good results. So they're not coming into this blind. They have a, a good idea roadmap of how to complete those.
And then it's on the screen. Yeah, it actually is. So your third bullet there, looking back at, at our main contributors into our system. How much do you, what is the typical done to actually influence any of those things? Is it more just research to determine which one is contributing water at what levels? Or what do, what do people practically do to affect that? I mean, I pretty much know, think I can guess what our main contributors are.
I bet you can't though. I don't know that we know. And it's not necessarily the same.
They mentioned businesses and one main one, not this screen, but one farther back. And we only have a couple of larger businesses coming in, right? Like our subject services.
Yeah, that may have been applied directly to mercury per se.
That's what I mean, like, how do we know that, that determine is, is that or not?
Yes, through the variance process when you go out and study all the different, you know, inputs.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, how do people do that?
Best, the best is to find, to get the data on the, of what's coming from
And that's what we're doing over the five years, right?
Yep, that's the whole. And you can do targeted sampling of the sewers and areas, which you know is upstream of it. So if you have a business that you think is contributing to mercury, you can test it where they enter the sewer system. Get a sample, see what the mercury level is there. Okay.
I mean, is any of this optional? Or like, we're just, this is what we gotta do.
For the variance process or for like the action tree or?
Yes.
Yeah. But yeah, the variance, I mean, if you didn't want any of the variance, then your limits would be what Stephanie or Rebecca had, like 1.8 forever until the 3.2 daily max. So it's either install the filters right now, delete these limits, or go through the variance process and the many activities that are part of the variance process. There are many, but it's either that or draw those filters. So.
So, yeah, there's thirty to one options.
Yeah.
So variance, though. Yep.
Yeah, in fact, they obviously, there's, it's, it's, it's extreme, you know, it's, it's expensive.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate all the time that your staff put in working with us on this.
Yeah, I really apologize if the audio wasn't great. I think what I'll do is like in PDF, it, and hopefully the audio will be better with PDF file. I could send it directly to you if you want to review it. It's 22 minutes. There might be some better chance of, there will be a better chance of it catching in its entirety that way. And then this public meeting is recorded. So if it was, if we're following a public meeting, it's recorded, but it wouldn't be the best place to listen to it. So I will follow up this meeting with sending, I'll just send it to you, Mike, if that's okay, directly to you and you can share it with anyone that maybe wants to look at it afterwards.
So works.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
That's why we have, you know, before the end of the public
Also, just, I'm sorry, you're talking still, I couldn't Yeah, the one thing I just wanted to make a reminder of too is this public meeting is required as part of the variance process only. It's not part of the regular permitting process. And so it is required between 45 and 60 days of the public notice. And so today is like the 50th day or 49th day. So there are still a few days left in the, or in the public notice process. If you do want to make any comments or if you'd like to ask any further questions, we can definitely accept any comments or questions throughout the remainder of the public notice period as well. We can accept those by written letter. We can accept them by email. There's also an online portal that you can submit comments on as well. And you can contact me directly for a phone call too. We'll just set up another way to report the, to have the question or comment reported if that's the desired method of contact. So after this, we do have about maybe if there are comments or questions that would change the, the conditions in the permit, we would make sure to incorporate both into the draft permit before routing it to EPA. EPA, EPA does take 60 days to approve. And after that time, that is when the permit will be final issue. And so I did some math today. It looks like the, the soonest, I mean, best case scenario that the permit could be final issued would be sometime in mid-August. It's more likely that the effective date, oh, it makes more sense a lot of times to push the effective date to the first of the month. And so if that date does end in the middle of August, it's likely we'll issue and make the permit effective. September 1st is probably a more likely date that I could get of anyway, so.
And then that would be the beginning of the five years?
That would be the beginning of the five years. Yep, exactly. And in Lake Superior basin, that's kind of what dictates that length of that variance. So because it's for the Great Lakes Initiative, that's a five year variance. And so the action tree items are set to be completed within those five years. If at the end of five years or at the end of four and a half years, the facility is still unable to meet or come into compliance with the water quality based default limits, then the city could at that time again apply for continued variance. It would be the same process where there would be a variance application, a review, a preliminary determination, and then an evaluation of whether or not that variance can be continued. And just as a reminder, this variance is based on the economic hardship. And so that would need to be proven again in four and a half years of the permit application when it comes in, so.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, thanks. Hi, it was also difficult for us to hear people in the room and the questions that you had. Was there any specific to the variance process?
Not yet.
I think Wes answered. Okay, thank you.
Well, Rudy, well, if there aren't any other questions at this time, as I said, feel free to contact me and or submit a comment online. Otherwise, I'll stop the recording and I'll save the present, I'll save the recorded meeting and then I'll also make sure to follow with the PDF of the presentation as well. Thanks, everyone. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, you guys.
Yeah, I was wondering if you have any questions and pretty much every It's pretty much easier to actually hear them all. Quite certain she was answering things.
I would guess so.
It's a lot easier to follow when you got all the background for the decks already. Hear a little sound and be like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you're coming into it.
Why do you have to tell me? No, I
You have to hear it.
I don't like look around, everybody else
We're kind of watch. Still.
Okay, we're here in the next couple of days, so we're in overtime.
I believe we need
Be ready to go whenever. We're live right now.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Robert, you can hear us, right?
Yep, sounding good.
Perfect.
It's all a moment to do first.
Yeah, it's like, I appreciate what you're doing, but it's like it's a bigger appreciation for everyone who can't
Yeah, we gave you some perspective.
Thankfully, no members of the public can come to listen to that presentation. That would have been a little challenge.
Yes. And no mod headsets would have fixed that.
Nope. Nope, we would have had to do something different.
Well, I thought I beginning that she's come here, so it's like
I think yourself takes has to do with this period. We admit it.
Think you're right. If the person has the context, but maybe sort of tracked it, but
Yeah.
I was not just distracted.
Well, thanks for letting me get through anyway.
Yeah. That's your sensation.
That is like
There's other choices that are worse.
Sure, yeah. I mean, it's either maybe it's a right, good, better, worst, right?
You should probably actually call us in order to, we jumped ahead. This was on your agenda, but it wasn't part of your meeting.
Mike, I'm gonna leave you just a second.
No, we posted Jimmy in five.
Oh, all right. I thought maybe that's what we were doing was waiting.
Well, we didn't know how long this will take. They said up to an hour.
Okay, so I thought, well, maybe we have to wait because of public you know.
We had a schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't know, we'll last. All right, I think no one would like that, well, I pulled something up that I need for later.
Maybe we won't time it.
Mike, I muted you, so when you talk, you'll have to unmute yourself. This is the variance.
Okay. So we, we select a call list order. All righty, it is 6:20. And with us tonight, I see Robert Prangle, right? Or I did?
Yeah.
Yep. All right, and is Kim here somewhere?
Kim is here too.
Okay, it's Dunsmar, Patrick Knight, Mike Roth, and Peter's one. Okay, it's Dunsmar, Patrick Knight, Mike Roth, and Peter's one, William Lowres, Michael Gary, and myself.
We've got Mike running, he's the applicant for the variance.
Okay, oh, for that variance. Still have
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and John Hagan.
Right.
Shane Steele.
Shane Steele.
And Teresa.
That's like a big part in tonight. All right, we have, um, worked through our wastewater treatment variance, so now we are on to open forum. Of all the special people in the room this evening, is anyone here for open forum?
We could do John at open forum if you want to receive his report.
Oh, is that, okay, do you want, yeah.
Help you.
Let's do it.
All right, would you like me to stand over there, so you can
For the sake of the meeting, you want to sit at the table here?
Oh, I can sit.
Yeah.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone, uh, my name is John Hagan Miller, and I work and I am the sixth superintendent for the new city hall and municipal. And I'm here just to give you an update on construction, action started this past Monday. Yay.
Yay.
And I just want to give you a few highlights of what's happening, what's gonna happen in the next till the next, uh, council meeting, and I'll be back to give you another update at that. Uh, right now, as most of you notice, we are demoing the building. It's going pretty good, uh, we haven't found anything really suspicious or odd or anything, that's, that's good. Uh, we're continuing to haul out material, uh, day by day. As soon as we generate it, we want to get it outside as soon as possible, because with the winds the other day, we had some stuff flowing around, and we were patrolling at least three, four times a day, um, within our, uh, fence area and without, or outside of our fence area, and we'll be continuing that throughout the whole project. Uh, so just let everyone know we're working on it, and try to get a different method of enough of the small stuff as best as possible, but we will continue to work on that throughout the whole project. So, uh, right now, we're probably about three quarters of the way, uh, complete, we've actually turned down, uh, walls, um, from street level up. Um, we should be finished with that late tomorrow, early morning. And then, uh, we're, as like I said before, we're continuing all the material, uh, as soon as we generate it, uh, we'll probably have more jobs in tomorrow than we did today. And, uh, after we have the main level, uh, taken off, we're gonna start going after the uh, foundation and slab upgrades. And that should bring us to the next week, and as we are pulling out the slab upgrade, we're gonna take a look at soils, see if there's any, any issues, if, uh, there is, we'll get on, we'll start testing, um, company up and, and take a look at it. And if everything goes good, we plan on having our, uh, concrete crew possibly start the week of twentieth. And if everything works great, we should have, uh, one port in and after that, we're gonna have to work with the excavator, because there are scenarios within within the building and outside of the building that have some swamp paint, um, a layer of it at certain elevations, I don't know, they are locked up. That have to be taken out and, uh, clean the building, so, um, just to support the building and slat. So in the background, anyone has questions, please ask now, or if you want to, just on the site, welcome. So, and I think as soon as we get the barbed wire in the project, we'll have tutors for the council if they want at a certain time, if it works out for everyone. And again, I'm, I'll be here just about ninety-three, ninety-nine percent of the time, so. We do want to schedule something, so if you get a little further along, that's fine with me, and we could do it out. In the evenings, that's fine with me also.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks.
One quick question, so here you ask, this is, they make me, it's like, wow, is when they have to drill through the geothermal, do you do that earlier in the process or later in the process?
Um, we're actually gonna do it a little bit earlier, uh, just because we got a late start on just starting the building, um. And we were proper, we're gonna do our foundation, backfill, and then put up our structural steel. But with, everyone know that, knows that winter can come at the end of September, up around here. Uh, we're actually gonna do, we're gonna do the foundations, backfill, and then start all of our, uh, plumbing, underground plumbing and our electrical work, and that, at that time, we have it's an open area for the welder to come in, start that. And we really can't have the welder and structural steel going at the same time, because there's just too much conflict involved in the air with steel, uh, equipment, and stuff like that, so we're gonna go a little bit differently. Because we thought that, you know, we could deploy it all even before winter, and maybe we can, uh, put temporary into the building, and do our work on inside after weather, it's horrible outside. Uh, the outside should be finished by fall, so we can do the interior stuff. So we're sort of reworking our schedule to, uh, just to get ahead of ourselves to the exterior portion as wells is and we did, uh, we had Jamar, who is gonna be doing the, uh, plumbing, the HVAC, they actually have subcontracted with welder and, uh, designer, and on the plans, I called for fifteen wells at three hundred feet, and they went through the calculations, who were actually able to bring down nine wells at and that's gonna actually save time, so Rick doesn't have to break down, move over to rivers, set back up and search up. So hopefully that'll save us, uh, because they thought at original, it's gonna be four weeks for doing those wells. Hopefully we can bring it down to three. And I don't know, uh, honestly, how much disturbance that is gonna be. I think it's gonna be drilling, it's not getting pounding, so. Uh, soon, we're supposed to have a meeting on site next few weeks, and I'll try to find out a more patient, I'll try to let the city know, because I'm talking to Alyssa, because she puts out a weekly blurb on something, uh, about just the city in general, and I've been talking to her, and I've been trying to give her heads up on, on items uh, that are upcoming, and if we have any noise issues, or anything like that, I'll let her know, and I'll for sure let you guys know at the five, we could or by home.
Thanks very much. Have a good
You too.
All right. Open forum, uh, now once we're on to the consent agenda, um, any questions about this, um, minutes or bills? Do you have any items on the consent agenda?
A second.
Any other comments, questions? All right, uh, I'll have a consent agenda.
Hi.
Bye. Oh, wait.
You don't have to.
Okay, we're good.
I was thinking, I thought you were just staring a little bit.
All right, moving on to planning commission, um, request a resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three to the Romney variance.
Mike, you wanna, might, uh, you might wanna unmute yourself if you can.
All right.
Yeah, as long as we've got, um, Mr. Running, uh, on the phone, maybe he just wants to give you all, uh, a bit of a rundown on what he's trying to accomplish, uh, at the, um, planning and zoning meeting, um, there wasn't a tremendous amount of back and forth in dialogue, it seemed extraordinary, uh, but I'll let, uh, Mr. Running take it over.
Yes, so, uh, basically, what I'm looking at, my current property contains two houses as it is. Looking to get a variance on, uh, separating the fourth lot, uh, or a lot on the I guess, south side of the property, that contains one of the houses, so I can, uh, sell that to my long-term renter, uh, who's currently living at the place, so, no construction, no added buildings, no nothing, just, uh, adding a different piece of property and allowing a different property owner.
And, uh, as a result of dividing that property, there were some, uh, there was variance to a setback, right, in particular
Correct. Yeah, so
Lot width, not setback.
Clear. The lot.
Yeah. But, uh, the change of the lot width from four feet to about thirty-five feet to allow four setbacks on property.
Great.
I am this is an example for me of what I don't really like about having these smaller lot concepts. I look at a lot now, but it isn't straight through, right, and that's really what you're accomplishing, what he's asking always, like, and then it gets the spring angle to it. And it just happens to be a neighborhood I'm familiar with all my life, and Gavin's been sitting there forever, and there's others in the neighborhood just like that. And I know this is kind of what the councils reintroduce these to you, this is the kinds of, they're like, and it's accessory dwelling. And you buy this property and you get this accessory dwelling, and if you don't like it, take it down, don't, you know, or move it. I don't really like these smaller lots, I've got another one next door to me, same thing, the original family took it, built another home on it, now you have this one lot that barely fits one thing. It just, it isn't my favorite thing about wherever you landed in this community to this, I mean, fine, if somebody wants to have that as part of their property, to have a second dwelling of this size on it, I guess that's okay, if it's all going to be theirs, but I just don't really support the smaller lots, the smaller separately owned things. At all, especially when you end up with these odd sized lots.
Well, I mean, that, that is what we've been looking for.
I know, that's what I'm saying. Well.
It's been ten years, it's been working.
It was minus my time. So I'm just
I can appreciate what you're saying, um, I think for, for me, and, and I absolutely don't disagree with, with that. Uh, for me, I, I look at, here you've got a tenant that has an opportunity for equity, uh, in, in terms of like, hey, I got homeownership, I get some of that experience, like, there's some mobility in there, and so we're not increasing the land, the slot size, right, we're just renegotiating how it's, how it's all. Uh, but yeah, you're right.
Because it's ultimately, the current owner has that whole lot. If that smaller building is in any way not working for them, they can have a
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate someone like homeownership, I get that, but I still don't know if setting up these lot, you know, even if it was just a straight clean shot, I might appreciate it more. These are regular things than just add problems later, now I've got a homeowner, where they want to be doing something, that's funny, says a lot.
Sure.
And sure, some of this is before, you know, it's created because of actions done before, we probably have very good, some of it, right? But I don't know, I want to just continue to it, it's just, we haven't, finally have an opportunity to have a conversation about which, as I know, we believe said, you know, this is what we couldn't have moved towards, but maybe how they're moving towards it, and even not organized, that, you know, like, I'm assuming another type of plan, so you have a
Yeah, conversely, I mean, you know, I think just to be a devil's advocate, like, if Mr. Running were to run into an investor that wanted to buy this property, they didn't want accessory dwelling, and they knocked it down, well, now we've got one hole on a property that could be two.
Boy, they can take it off, don't have to knock it down. I mean, it's not, you know, and Mr. Running, it's really not all
And you know when they say it's not about
It really is.
This time it's really not.
I'm kind of brought, using you, I apologize, for a conversation
Yeah.
About our policies and how we view these things, and I mean, you can also flip that and say, is what is the marketability for this person who's buying it now to sell it in the future?
I would say that there's no doubt that that is easy. But it's not, I mean, if they're gonna buy it, if they want to sell it, uh, that you, anybody would sell it, no problem. Because people will like it, it's, it is a funky, neat setup that here we are, trying to overlay some sort of reasonableness on top of what was really necessary, and so that's why we ended up, but we ended up discussions about it, it's a whole point, so we could talk, you know. Doesn't make sense, and I don't walk anybody there, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I was a I think this is what we meant, we meant to spend it though, meant to say.
But do we mean them to be separately owned, or do we say a property owner can put a smaller unit on here?
Right, no, we said that. I see, I see. Yeah. I think you both, but what we want, that's both.
Well, this is good to have this policy conversation, it's a useful one, it's an important one. But the question in front of you is a specific one, about an individual circumstance.
Well, I agree with what Tracy, I think you might be setting a precedent, you'll be blob out by being all thirty-five, or then the next time, about thirty-two or thirty, whatever this new owner wants to add on that building, that asks for additional variances.
We don't always have to say yes, I mean, and, I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't at this point, you know. You know, and they're, they're making a recommendation, right, it's not that we have to um, but the, I mean, I hear that, it's a pretty slow, a lot, I mean, do you lay down every time? No, I mean
I don't get too concerned about this as a, as a precedent-setting issue, you have to describe your findings, what's specific about this.
Yeah.
And then the precedent is set, if somebody else comes and their, their situation is exactly the same, well, if you thought this was okay, why would you think that's different? So I don't, I don't think there's too much to worry about setting a precedent. If you don't like this, and you can make findings about what is wrong with this, then say no, but if this, if you can make findings about what's okay about this, then if somebody came in the future and asked for that same thing, you'd be okay with it.
Well, you know, like, me personally, I wouldn't, but I was kind of hoping from the two of you, I hear why I shouldn't think, it's okay, maybe you kind of did. But, I mean, even more specifically, because, as you know, I miss meeting and not because of this, but
Yeah.
Yeah, which is my own mistake.
I think that applicant would like to say a few things.
Sure. Thank you.
So, and I do understand what she's saying, um, this particular lot that I'm laying out, it's still within the lot size minimums, so it's not a super small lot, like I've seen, you know, closer to downtown and stuff. Um, it's still within the, the square footage of the minimum size, I believe it's actually about three hundred or so, bigger than the minimum. Um, but it's just the front side of the, the, the road-facing side of the lot, that would be different, would be smaller, just to allow for the building setbacks of eight feet.
Yeah, it looks like if it kept going straight across, it would just hit your house, right? If we didn't give you that, and it's not even a setback, it like, literally would hit into your house.
You could draw a line that would go between the buildings, that was a straight line, that would create the same lot size, but that would require a setback variance for both properties, because now both houses would be within eight feet of that line.
No idea.
Yeah, I know what you mean, but I mean, you're, what you were looking for is the regularity would be Yeah, I know what you mean, but I mean, you're you were looking for is the regularity would be for would be better than the jogged line.
You couldn't even do it, I guess.
I think you could, but you'd still be asking for variance.
Couldn't you do in a way where you just ask for a variance on the the one house and have it?
I don't think there's enough room for both, I but I do think that um it's a matter of preference whether or not a person buying a house would rather have the jogged line or the not jogged line. It's really not, one's not said better than the other. So we we've said as our policy that the setback is important, and the fact that it's important, and the lot size is important, well, one of those things has to be. And this is the one that he's asking to to do, and it works.
Yeah, I mean, these are.
Oh, I do have color, I'm sorry, I couldn't see it in a second. I didn't see it, I feel, I feel like you like there was no option because you get his house, like.
But there's nowhere else space to build alongside the house. It's. Turned put a different lines.
Yeah.
The shape wires.
Shape wires, wires, irregular.
And then sometimes that just, that. So maybe it's, I'm sorry, go ahead now, I'm going to be in the picture.
Mike, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I guess the only other thing is, uh I mean, the the jagged, I know that it's not appealing to have the jagged property line. Um I know it's been passed before um in different variances to allow for setbacks. Um but I guess, yeah, I mean, the biggest thing I'm I'm looking at is like, I'm just allowing homeownership for two people instead of one person, you know, it's I I, you know, to keep the property values down on the two houses. You know, selling one separately and one separately instead of selling two houses together. Um I'm just allowing people with smaller budget to, you know, purchase a house in Grand Marais.
Well, I would like to make a motion then to approve resolution twenty-four dash thirty-three.
That's one question.
You're in the right moment. This is when we do that.
Discussion.
Discuss.
So is this in a sense, you know, depending on which way a person goes, is this any precedent? Is that a part of what you were saying before? Well, I mean, that's kind of what you were saying.
I'm saying, don't, I wouldn't be concerned about the concept of setting a precedent. I think the things you are saying you're okay with now, you you should plan on being okay with again, unless some other circumstance changes.
Right, and what I would like to say, if I'm not off here, is that you have to look at where we, what we set. So when they approved it, and they made the findings, and we're using that, and we're not necessarily saying that eight feet or five feet or twenty feet is what we're making judgment on. We're actually looking at the overall, how is this impacting the neighborhood, does it impact?
Yeah, you're saying you want, you allow the availability of an additional single-family home, you allow for more affordable housing, joining families to the area. You you meet all of the minimum requirements, um and it's only five feet short. And the buildings that you're accommodating were there before the rules were put in place, so the, and the, um yeah, but those are the findings that you're using to support, and so if another case comes up where those findings are appropriate, would you also then be willing to support that? I think that that seems reasonable to say, but if it's different circumstances, you might find that it's not reasonable, even if they're asking for a similar request, every one of these has to be looked at on its individual merits.
Right, and the findings is where you're looking at. We're not saying like five feet, we're not doing that specific, we're saying those, that's.
Okay, well, here's my thought. Finding two makes more affordable housing for young people. But we don't have anything on here that says this is has to be homesteaded. Now, in this instance, apparently the purchaser is someone who's living in the home. They could sell it in six months, or it could be the next time, you're not a homeowner, someone who just wants to rent, and that just happened down the street for me. And I don't see anyone in that home, and I've got that all around my block, and we don't have any way to protect that right now, so I can't say that finding number two is viable because there's no way to guarantee that's what's gonna happen with it. If I knew that it would be homesteaded, I might feel better about.
I've got this exact same situation. Where the property line had a job to accommodate a less than following setback, and it's a rental. It's gone away in a rental.
Well, and I I think the thing we have to recall, or keep in mind is that we cannot completely do that control, you know, what happens to the property. This is in the R one, we said, okay, you can't be out here, and vacation out here. But we don't say we can't, and I don't think you would want to get into this, that, or saying we're not.
I'm asking.
I don't think we can provide even legal, like we can't provide people restricted.
Right, and we don't want to.
We wouldn't want to, right? But as far as the finding, I don't think it's, I don't think it's off, because currently what we're what we're doing today potentially is 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 in light of progress, but it's doing what we saw it to do. If that, if the finding says, it's providing more more affordable housing for someone.
And you can't, you can't go without it.
Yeah, it allows, it doesn't guarantee.
Well, okay, so I guess all I'm saying is that I wouldn't call it a finding, I would list it here as as a reason because you can't.
Well, we can say that we're adding more housing than likely affordable housing, relatively speaking. We don't have to say that the unfamily is fine.
Well, I mean. Well, it's the we here, city council planning zone.
Well, it's it's a finding.
These are your findings, you get to write them.
Yeah, I mean, we made a finding of that, but the findings that we made the findings. And that was brought to us in.
We figure it to be consistent with the property.
Yeah, so that's a content plan, we did a little bit of zoning rules.
But that's not to say that needs your mark, right? Right, I'm beside that right now.
Yeah, and I'm finally, this round is someone who lives here, of course, but I have so many homes in my neighborhood for which they're just a second home. And I know we can't say that it's homesteaded, and all I'm saying to this is that I don't think it should be sort of a box to check right now because we don't know long-term where it will land, and what I mostly see is homes going to second. Right, that's the only thing I'm kind of saying, because oftentimes we make decisions with the facts of the moment, which is kind of like what you're saying, and that's always under control. But then, although we don't end up with our intended results in the long term, but in a sense, we set a precedent precedent as mine was just saying, that if we think this is okay, and then it comes up again, so then kind of like, okay, well, it's different, well, nothing, so this is what we need to say. And this this whole housing thing is, you know, I'm busy working on some of this other stuff around short stay, and I think the whole thing just I discovered some things last week, it's just very difficult, you know, and no one knows, we're always getting our intended results. Which is not for the property owner here to take.
That's a hundred percent accurate, we're not always having our.
Well, and right, can't, I mean, you know, we've made, I mean, we've made these critical changes, where planning zone, we're like a we've made, you know, acreage changes, made some big changes.
And if there's a. Plan, you're fine, but let's look at that maybe someday, right? There's a lot of stuff there that might raise your eyebrows.
Right.
There's something about this, um to get back to the precedent idea, the finding that directly addresses that is the criteria number four, that the plot of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. Uh that's a tough task to really get done, right? It's it's easy to argue that that's never true, but we always have to make a finding that addresses this issue. And in this case, the finding is that the buildings were developed before the lot with minimum was in place. There will be others that can meet that test. But there's a limit to it, there's not an unlimited amount, and somebody couldn't come in now and put in an accessory dwelling unit and meet that test necessarily.
Well, there's two just in that neighborhood that have been there forever, and they have the same, there's another cabin, two houses down that sits in there, the same thing could happen.
Well, but really not, I mean, in this case, I mean, he's meeting all the other requirements except for.
Yeah.
So it's just because that you can't just divide a lot, and you have to have enough space, and I mean, we wouldn't have approved it. It's just like, okay, postage stamp around this house, now it's gonna be sold. No, I think that's not what we said, we're not saying that, in this case, you said there's, you know, we're making a jig job in this one instance, to provide what else. And if, you know, and really, we're sending yes to like a family. That's, you know, we have to deal with living, we can't spend time thinking about all the things that we have.
Um.
I mean, we do, I mean, we do, but in this, but as this.
Six months, things could change.
Sure, but in this meaning, when we're talking about this.
Yeah, I mean, and we found that especially when we had all of the um extra services of the border and all those, all those folks, and there'd be some things just like that, I mean, or something, so. I'm sorry, Mr. Running, but I just wanted to understand some of this better, and unfortunately, I was not able to attend the planning meeting last week, you know, my own this timing, which I would have asked some of these, you know, that was a conversation I wanted to have them. Um that's my, not, you know, being at the right time, but. I'm trying to organize this. Okay, go ahead.
We have a motion and a second. You do.
So let me get to the top here, so I state this correctly. Uh all are favored in proceeding on Zoros, which is twenty-four dash thirty-three.
All right, I am.
Yo, I'm not a fan of that.
Yeah, but we need to. I can't. Can we push this back?
Well, not only can you, you have to, um there's a time limit on it where you have to make a decision. This resolution did not pass with a two-to-two vote, but you did not pass a resolution to deny the variance either, so you have not taken action on the variance. We can bring it to your next meeting, and we'll have a resolution, we can bring the same one back and have a conversation with Craig. Though for those of you that are devoted, no, we can talk about offline findings that might make sense for a no resolution as well. And you can be ready to take an action either way.
Think what I would also like is just, and I need to do this, there's more time to understand this, which I wasn't able to. And you were not making my story, okay? I came trying to be there, um and so maybe part of this is we need to understand, and also I'd like to look at some of our things. Because I see the potential for this very close amount, and maybe it would help for me to understand where, like you said, some places just isn't going to apply, and if I could see that, that would be helpful.
But what you have to.
Let's wait three weeks and pick it up again. So Mike, this this is not a yes or a no, it'll be back on the agenda in three weeks.
And we're not, we're not hitting yard meetings before.
No. No, one of the things you could potentially do is ask them to reconsider something, but I don't think you need them to. I think you've got what you need from a planning commission, and they held the hearing that you needed, so now it's just a matter of is there more information you want, or just more time to study some things?
I would, and do I send that to planning?
No, you can talk to us about it, um we can help you if you want some information, and we'll make sure everybody gets.
Because really, my issue is back to is if I say yes right now, I want to know all these other things I can walk around town and visualize, and then am I having to because the same thing's there, say yes to that, and I really want to understand that.
Yeah, I think it sounds like you need some clarification on what what that planning process looks like, and what is it that?
And I was not on city council when these changes were being. I know, I'm sure there was lots of conversation, but I wasn't. And I think that, that's all, because I I can see this happening, and I can see developments, right, that might happen, happen small.
I hope so, that's the rule.
So, yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah, I I think, yeah. I I'm not sure that what you're saying on the, we shared it once, but the thing, that's we're taking a message that's been brought to us. And we're not making a, you know, just by saying, yes, we're finding that that wouldn't be true all over, all businesses.
Sure, and I didn't mean like literally we would go through, but I can mentally go through and spot a lot of these. Lot, so I just kind of went like, hey, let's look at a few of these on the map, explain to you how they fit within, just to get an idea. And then, and you know, maybe you're not, nothing will ever happen with those, which just would help me. And I don't need this to be a tiny place to do that, but within that block, I can read.
Yeah.
Then I get to know. And I apologize, uh for studying you back further on this, but.
I don't think you have to apologize to anybody, Tracy, like you, that's what we're, that's what we're doing, that's your job, right? But we're supposed to dissect and fully understand what it is we're talking about, and throw it on, so like, that's, that's absolutely okay.
Thanks, so appreciate that, because I I don't fully know what all the zoning codes that were into the copy exchanges that they were.
Okay.
All right, next up is uh the city.
Do I get a comment before I take off, or is it?
Certainly, of course, sorry.
Okay, um I just want to point it out there that, you know, uh Patrick has all my contact info. Um if you guys do need further questions, more answers, reach out to me, I'll uh, I'm available, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike, sir.
Oh, geez. It, you're quiet, listen.
Yeah. I'm geared to asking to resuce or reestablish the city treaty that acts as the spirit entity for the development of better reinforcement. We need to apply over grant, this little background, we apply the over grant to develop their reinforcement plan, how do you treat the tourism? And referring to E O R, this credit, and and we believe it's a good idea to test the community projects, and the tree board would be a good place to put that steer. Also, if we re-up our interview city that is named, we have to. Part of it. Need the tree board. And sure, okay, it's a three-member board. They are. Members, I thought it was five.
Yeah, I did.
There's conflicting language about that, and it's most recent version, there were three members on.
Okay. Didn't they know that?
So the second paragraph needs to be changed to three. Turn on this, turn on the product persons, post shooting existence.
Um, so there's one that says five, uh and then there's a more recent one that says three, but both were still in the code.
Yeah, well, we can clean up the code, but that initial second paragraph you're reading is about the creation of the board and setting it up. And it was modified with with more recent uh ordinance, but clearly, I missed the change.
Yeah.
Okay. And. Outside of ordinance, um, how much does this work? Is, does the park board in any way work with this board as well? Because the park has to deal with our public trees. How is that, so really? Overlap?
Uh, yeah, there's overlap, but the, the park board's not going to do the thinking about the tree policy. In, in broad, because they're really operating the parks. Uh, but since a lot of our public trees are on the land that they're managing, of course, there'll be a lot. Overlap and the staff involved in parks will be involved.
So then all we'll have is really more with the park director.
I would think so, yeah. And but part of this is we don't know yet because we don't have our tree management plan. And what we know is that in order to create that management plan, you need a steering committee. And it just makes sense that we use this setup, which we've had in the past, a tree board to be our steering committee. And then I think we're going to learn more as those folks are seated and as the management plan is created.
Maybe give these a bit of a timeline. Uh, the reigning period begins January twenty twenty-four. We have three years. EOR, that is big, it's pretty big years. I think they like six or year. So be looking at their, uh, management. Five following. Um. They would like to, EOR would like to begin their inventory in June. And they would also kind of kick off a process with the steering committee, tree board, uh, in June as well. So that's an interesting timeline for three members, but. We're here as quick as we can be to ask.
So if you just nod your heads and say yes, because you really don't need to do anything other than that. Then we'll get started on recruiting and the plan will be to get three people. Um, your own personal recruiting voice is always useful, but we'll just put the, the word out. And if you know somebody who you think would be great for this, then please call them. With, with a three person board or three year terms, when they do make appointments, somebody's going to get a one year term, somebody's going to get a two year term. Just to set up that rotation. So that every year you're appointing one person, three person.
One motion.
If you're all thinking this is a good idea, that works and you just say, yep, this is a good idea.
Sure. Um. A motion for the creation of a city tree board or a four point two.
Well, it's created, right? You just want to re.
Okay.
Receive, receive.
Yeah, I'm saying yes.
We're on.
Off to the races.
Do you have a communication plan? Um, are you going to get in front of OREL? Are you going to get on the radio? Are you going to use all our local mediums to attract quality candidates as part of your? To meet us along with us being, talking to people.
We're going to do what we do when we recruit.
Which normally isn't very much. That's what I'm asking. I mean, sometimes you put a little sign somewhere and nobody reads or a little ad. So that's what I'm saying. We're gonna do something. We have some other boards. This topic's coming up later in the meeting. So I'm hoping there's a communication plan that is lively and appealing.
I have this with the communication.
Yes.
This would be great.
Yeah.
We'll find something.
Thank you.
All right, Shane's got someone.
Thanks, Shane.
Still worth it to make it there. I don't know.
All right, thanks. Uh, next up, the animal sheltered land sale agreement. Tracy, did you want to try this or?
So everybody knows we're buying a piece of property in the business park.
It's a great deal.
It's pretty cheap. It's a dollar. Yeah. Um, it's necessary for the construction and placement of the animal pile that is we are currently working on. So please approve this.
Motion to approve.
Hey, Ellen Bieber.
Hi.
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 I'm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council on Staff Reports, Ben.
Ah, just, um, not just a timely commission, uh. Which we talked about.
Oh, why, wasn't there something? Something?
I think. I'd rather.
Okay. What do you have?
For I know. I don't mind what we can do.
Yeah, for example.
Oh, it's a small area, yes, sure. People hadn't talked to them a long time. Got to speak on them once all my old friends from college days to do it.
I was going to say, I already know who to ask, cause that was a great idea and that should try to give them, there's no, whatever. So we have a lot of, so. So come back here. Anything else?
So I think that happened this time.
Um, I sent all of you out to your useless by monthly reports. You get like the details from the EDA meetings. But a couple of side things, um, I'm on a subcommittee for Technic Harbor and we met at the end of the month. There is a grant through Minnesota D for Community Energy Transition. Um, like there's so many grants right now, all related to Technic Harbor, so COVID, COVID's plan closing. And our conversation was decide we should pursue this grant, which we did. And part of we know what this work is, we have to be able to work with Minnesota Power or there's no point to this. And so she was able to get ahold of Eric Force going around it quickly and did secure support for this. So that's good. We'll work with them. This grant, however, cannot be applied for by the EPA. So the next step is to ask the county to be the applicants along with the stronger township. Just because as the liaison to the city, this is one of my subcommittees on the EPA. Um, but of course, anything economically developing there is beneficial for all of us. So. Cool possibilities.
Have to write a letter of support for the grant.
Yeah, and this grant is really to help us provide a planning we need to develop the ideas to see what we could do. You know, what, what, what makes sense, what doesn't, what part of the line on whatever. And then of course, some of us could be close. So yes, that's our next steps on that. Um. The EDA is having a strategic planning workshop on January seventh. Uh, to really plan on the next few years' future direction, what we're supposed to be doing. You should have all received a survey from North Spam. So if you please take the time, we already worked through editing it once to narrow down the time requirement and questions involved. So hopefully it's been, we'll love the feedback. It's not, it's still overwhelming. But really appreciate that if everyone could do that for our meeting. There is, which I never fully understood this, but on the EDA board. Mary Sloman is on the board and what I didn't understand was she was filling an interim.
Oh.
Right. And those are six year terms by state statute. And I think they roll twice, right? One term and one term.
Yeah.
So you can in theory be on there for 12 years. It's really important.
Seventeen, if you do a five year term first. You can, you can do a partial term before that too. You can be on there a long time.
So when we seat someone on that board, it's really important. So.
So there's an opening now?
So there is now an opening and we want that filled by, we would love to. It's not a requirement by that strategic planning meeting on June seven. Now that's a county board seat, so it's not the city's liaison or person.
Oh, okay.
But if you know of anybody, um, it would be important that they, uh, apply.
So it's the.
It has to be somebody out in the county, not a city resident.
It could be a city resident.
Pardon?
It could be a city resident.
What could?
Sure.
I had, it had to be outside.
They're in, they're, I mean, they're still in the county. So.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of weird. I don't want to say that. All right. So that's a clarifier. Uh, and I know they, I think they have wanted to applicants, possibly. I'm not sure about that, but I just want to spread the word on that. Um. And then also just heads up, and this kind of gets to what Shane, when Shane was here with the board members. Um, Myron Hersheim is our city representative and his term ends at the end of the, this year. He could be applying, right? He's not the end of his form.
Yes.
And he may very likely do that. I don't know. But what I would like is a better communication plan to the public about these applications kind of like. So. So that we don't run short or if Myron should not slide whatever, just kind of keep that in the back pocket. One last note, if you didn't catch me in the news, a lead, um, is potentially being sold to Canadian interest. I'll need PUC approval. And if that happens, it'll become a privately held company. And in theory, Minnesota Power will continue to operate underneath the mask is, it's not supposed to change. But just heads up, just awareness on that.
Minnesota Power, an elite company will be Minnesota Power or something else.
So that can be interesting. You have the PUC loves that, but I'll agree, it has Technic Harbor. North House School, I was invited by Greg Ray, Greg before, I think, built in which I did Monday morning. And saw all of the maps and heard where they're at and their timelines. So I just sent them a tour.
Yeah.
The building.
Good.
And saw that and where everything is laying out, what they tried to do with it, or you know, what was in the building. Apparently they already know their interns at Congress again, and I think so bad. It's like, um. Their interns are already across the street, building, said, and where Myron Hersheim was at. So they're out of that upper building that used to be where not all, but some of them lived. And they already kind of be dividing that space for their workspace. And then that little mini sky wave that connects the two buildings, we have now looking at spaces. Anyway, set the whole layout. And then he mentioned about how they were going to put up gutters, so we take care of that potential runoff. And we talked about earlier, yeah, that would maybe help. Tour. Then some time ago, I know we talked a whole lot about it in Ardenne, but we had that walk through downtown. Last summer with Viscount County and Dave Pierce, Dick and Mike and I. So we had a meeting, Mike and Dave and I last week. And just want to set on next steps and how to tackle that and divide it into three things. Harbor Park. Um, talking about all the growth down there. It was subtle that. Dave will, and the park board will, and they'll come and let us know what's up and whatever. But they're just going to put a long-term plan together between budgets, as staff allows, to reset some of that planting. So it's less maintenance, more natural, whatever. But they'll take care of it and it'll be done as time allows. Downtown business area consensus, um. For, um, some kind of minimum landscape standards that business owners can comply with considering a timeframe. So we sent out a re survey, which just late this afternoon, I did a rough draft and sent out to Mike and Dave to kind of like react to. If I keep close to, just something that I've kind of talked about of. And you know, part of that purpose would be to make, um, property owners aware of the current ordinances, responsibilities. Also get a feel for, you know, how do they think this whole thing affects their business in one way or another? Um, and to make sure that the conversation stays just within the business. We're not talking about the public plans. We're not talking about Highway sixty-one, just truly that with court area. Get a feel where we're at. I mean, there are some things that are standout for them as well. And then we talked about Highway sixty-one, this is district as it's on with the main emphasis being on, um. The grass areas of those boulevards. We, um, we use the scope out of course for trees and bushes because that will be handled under this. New treaty board and Dave's current work. Um, and, um, said, and what's the standard we really want? Um. How do we, uh, determine, how do we work with the business owners, what's their thoughts on this? There's also been brought up a base of species and how, how can, can we and how would we deal with those? So once again, it would be still another deal of making them aware of current responsibilities, how they lie right now. But what is the most cost effective and time efficient needs to get this? What we want in this area, which we view, uh, at maybe a little bit higher level. We just spent a lot of time and money, many years to make this kind of a showcase for us. We've got public art coming in, we have public space, the city, the neon space. And then we want a lot of, and we do get a lot of escrins back and forth on this. So how are we going to settle on this with, with the businesses and those boulevards? And that's really the focus of it. I think the second step on that is some kind of survey on that to get a read. And then. I would like to get some quotes for services. Um, one of the things that Dave brought up was when it's just a long strip of boulevard, there's nothing to go in and take you on more and all. But when you put all these other little things in place there, all of a sudden now you're busy working around the tree plants. You're sitting here, you're some public art, you know, yeah, whatever. What's the most efficient way to still take care of those grounds and with the equipment and staffing that they have? Are they the most efficient solution? And I think we need to, to figure that out. So that's kind of where that's at. So there's just, just keeping you guys current on that. We went to, Mike and I and Dave and Catalys and went to Chamber Exchange. With like, with the chamber on. Tuesday morning.
I have the same question. I wasn't sure.
It's a chamber held event. It's the same thing we did last summer. And they just wanted to talk about, um, some upcoming summer things. So it was basically canvas updates, downtown landscapes. Who was one? Um.
Western traders.
Yeah, we updated them on that. One of the things, it's not, I know it's, it hit me later. But anyways, we did that and I think it all went well. We don't have a whole lot of canvas updates because we did it at Ardenne's last summer. So I don't, I think it went well.
Yeah.
I think anytime we get in front of a group like this, we have just a conversation. I think it's really good for the council to, to do that and really, um, with groups. And it was, I think we got a lot of positives from that. And then I went to their. Afternoon event, um, that joins Ben Franklin and they had an excellent turnout and lots of good conversations. I heard a lot of positives then from that too. So that was good. And then we had a meeting with the US Army Corps of Engineers on Tuesday. Thanks to Stephen Janicey from the County Soil and Water. He found that there's a grant program through the Army Corps of Engineers. That helps communities with issues such as the state. And because currently we fall under similar to the wastewater treatment, we fall under a designation. Um, with, uh, based on income levels in our community. This potential could be a no cost engineering services from the Army Corps of Engineers. So there were four engineers on the call. We've already set up bi-weekly meetings to keep this moving along. They've got a couple of people who were, as their schedule allows, they're out of Detroit. I caught that right. They have another project somewhere along the shore. Um, but they'll come up for a site visit as the next step. And then they're going to look at similar projects done elsewhere for to begin considering solutions. similar projects done elsewhere for to begin considering solutions. Unlike the Stan Tech people from our other project who are here all the time, who really understand the state, these people. They're smarter, but they don't, and that's not common in that, but they clearly didn't know that we are in a Stan picture. So a site visit is a, is a, wonderful. So that, I felt pretty positive about that.
It's great, really.
Yeah, so I feel really good that maybe there's something there to help us. Um, finally, we had our, our first cannabis larger community conversation meeting as well on Tuesday. Which, um, the county attorneys and I guess should Patellison. They're doing that jointly.
They're co-chairing.
Thank you. So we had that and current status, um, I think the most enlightening thing I got out of that, because I see that in stories down in the Twin Cities. One of the issues that's come to light, which Molly and Patellison are concerned about, is the lighting penalties for minors in possession or selling right now. And there's a concern that they'll be used by older adults who would face larger, and so until the state works it out, they have a lot of their concern with being their jobs. And then, um, actually in the morning, Patellison brought this up, the, the conflicts between state and federal law make it very difficult for him, even around, um, current licensing terrible things that he's been on to. Um, so there's some bigger things way out of us. The things we need to take, have conversations on to get on our city agenda. Um, which we knew last year is we have our temporary alcohol licenses for events. And so, um, I have a discussion of potentially implementing that to include the local open sea, tempurite, THC, whatever, however you want to phrase that, um, beverages to that licensing. Then there are also cannabis events and the state site talks about that, meanwhile, last summer, they distinguish what they're talking about. So we might want to have a conversation about that, because we have some control over that, states not to hear that. Um, apparently there's, right now, we would be the ones to put together, if I heard this right, an ordinance. There's somebody's got, is any retail sale without a license. That's not, that would be done by us to be then acted on by the state. So if I went out right now and tried to have a retail operation, it would be the city's ordinance that would go after that, even though if they get higher levels, you know, you aren't doing that. But if I had to draw a, something, we need to set it on the side.
Yeah, she said there was a number of things in the state statute where the state did not set penalties for violations. And so the thought from prosecutors is that there probably needs to be penalties for those things set at a local level in order to be most effective.
So that might be coming our way, and then apparently we have more same kind of thing, warning areas as well. So that's what I had with that, um. This food for thought while we're all here and we were sort of thinking about real estate and zoning. I've been working for quite a while to try to understand where was that with short stay, especially now because that ordinance is sitting in on the people's, um, planning. So way, I think, for the end of last year, uh, Robert Thompson and Kyle Over gave me data and a really cool G S map on, to help me understand this, so I spent almost a day last week digging more details than maybe I need to, but I really just wanted to understand. And I had a list of all the property, um, IDs and just checked to see, I could tell by stats that the way they brought them out, which I suppose I could show you and share, but, you know, I went to him and said, okay, this is East Bay. This is Cobblestone Coal. But what caught my eye was four of Cobblestone Coal were not listed as short-stay loans in the data. All of East Bay is. And I already asked Mike about this, so it's a misunderstanding on my part, and it just goes back to history. But when there was so much conversation, when East Bay asked me come in condo association, and there were two things, because I remember very important at the time, one, that restaurants stay in place, and two, that no hotel rooms were lost in this, that they could not be just condos for people to live in. They had to be turned over and available for rent. And so I was, and then of course, we all know that very quietly, all of a sudden, when that got approved, Cobblestone Coal, just miraculous, came to life and no one was aware, and that kind of gets back to my, our, for the meeting. We don't always know what's going on, it's changed rapidly. So anyways, I've been looking at this going, why are these four treated like a seasonal cabin owner? Because they can't be there all the time. And he said, well, they just have no requirement that they have to rent. To, to. So if they're not required to be rented, rented out, and they don't have to be, this should stand out, or, I didn't know that. And to me, then I think that's a slippery slope of someone saying, well, I don't have to rent them out, why can't I be here all the time? Why, why am I limited to how often I'm there? Why can't this kind of be mine, like, and I'm not sure we ever wanted private condos on the way from. So I guess I just kind of probably getting wheels turning. Like, have we had unintentional results, or is this what we want in the future? And I personally know that one of those people wants that. So I think we need to think about some of these things, and then I maybe flip and say, we thought it was great. And I'm saying it isn't. Or, um, Blue Water and Crosby's to potentially be able to rent that, right? Because we're envisioning it as employee housing. But at some point, again, does that someday become permanent residents? Not, we haven't had them in the past, we have downtown. I just wonder how that bothers, so I just want to bring it up in the, that since we're kind of hot in the soul talk. Deal with that. But I'll get my stuff ready, and then I'll just, which is kind of what I was going to do, I'll come in and explain. Just get the, the data, whatever, see what you think about it. I just wanted to get round numbers, I've got a little pie chart. It's going to happen for itself itself. Um, percentage-wise, none of these things are big when you think of it, but because our community is so small and the number of true single-family homes we have, you know, to lose ten to a short-stay, that's a big impact. So I think this is something we have to look at in terms of numbers, not percentages. And the way the data is cut for my purposes, my other meaning, is anyone who's already in a business, kind of like yours, it's a, it's like, it's not a home, well, I've heard of one, yeah, but, you know, or East Bay or whatever. Yeah, way back. Um, it's been divided for many years. I mean, I kind of pulled that out of the data, I really, for my thing, when it's twenty percent, it's just homes. But that data is broader, you could look at it from other ways. So there, that's, um, what I, yeah, it was about. Seven twenty-nine.
We said, we said.
I remember something.
Oh, we are.
I had the opportunity to, along with Mike and Patrick, to have a lot of, a lot of treatments, not to, I think, for tonight, how we kind of hold together the sketchiness. You know, it didn't help out quite a bit. But the neighbors are there.
Yeah. It's kind of merging it, so. Well, and, you know, I just really appreciate you just patience tonight, because I, I think once I hear it, like, I just want to be able to know what I'm doing better and know what it crosses again, I'm supposed to be, I just need to understand that. And I'm thinking, yeah.
I would say that in general, like, when we look at findings, you know, like, we, we often times grapple with, what does that, and there's things that are loose and it's hard to understand. So I would, like, I don't think, I think if people that's on the board, our times to kind of share. What does that mean? Right, um, so.
But I mean, the, the purpose of course, it is a job. And it's not a matter, it was a matter of the community. So it is a job.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, I agree, and I, I think that we have precedent, I think it's not important, you might highlight it exactly where precedent did, you have an awesome all-short experience. But I don't think that's ever really crossed our minds on, on the board as far as have we agreed on something like this in the past, because I, I think you just look at things, basically, I think everybody just gone on this, this property, so when we look at it, look at it, it's like, wow. So, so I understand, like, yeah, right, right, well, that was the other thing, it's, I know we talked about, what is that the neighborhood feel about these things, right? When we allow people to speak out or down on, on those issues, right? And we rely on their answers to speak.
And they do, and we hope to compliment. Oh.
Yeah, it's not perfect, and we can't forecast so bad. But that's some of the long-term visions, so maybe we should, and I think that requires some very different.
But that's, that's getting into like, what is, I mean, we can do that.
One is a conference, I have to say.
Yeah.
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 We love that, obviously, you know.
Yeah, I would. I just felt, I, I know I would feel better if I understood this better with me. Again, for a good time.
It's a pretty high bar to think you're always going to get an issue, run through a plan and commission meeting, run through a quick conversation at a council. Sometimes you need more time, that's okay, you get sixty days without having to ask anybody for anything. And you get sixty more if you need them. So.
I have personal thoughts and concerns related to what Tracy's talking about. Along with, not every day, but many times a week. Um, people in the community commenting, asking about these, very things, they don't like these smaller lot sizes, they don't, they don't like what they perceive as old education rentals. They don't like, uh, all the new development that they're seeing. But then the same and different people are sometimes talking about the life opposing.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, it's a tough one. In principle, I like what he was saying, he was making this available for somebody on more of a formal scale. But I have these concerns too, but what does the future look like in May? Is it going to stay that way, or is it going to turn into another cavern?
We'll save those thoughts until next meeting, because we're going to have him back to get to listen to you talk about it.
Yeah, how is that, just quick process, does it go back to, you guys are just.
Unless you wanted to kick it back, which I didn't.
No, I just didn't know what, how, how that works.
I mean, I suppose we could, but.
But no, no. Hey, are we in, Jer?
We are.
Yeah, poor Robert's like.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.